Energy of the pins to the right.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to call the order, the work session for Maplewood City Council Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a roll call.
Councilmember Corel.
Right.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yeah.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Yeah.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yeah.
Councilmember Page.
Yeah.
Mayor Reforms present.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to you for the budget discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, you've received draft two of the consolidated budget last night with an update today that included the formerly excluded legislative budget, which I know you're interested in reviewing. I'd like to identify just a couple of key changes that we made in order to accommodate the recommended cost of living increase. We went through line by line and looked for opportunities to reduce and centralize in several key areas that tend to be a little swishy if we're not looking closely at our expenditures. These include office supplies, general supplies, cleaning supplies, computer supplies, and memorials and reports. So we did make some cuts in individual departments around those areas. We also made a reduction in vehicle repair costs in all departments that are now going forward, going to be leasing vehicles. We trued up our utilities costs in what we're projecting based on what we have spent this year and the previous fiscal year. And we made some adjustments to our phone service expenditures, both based on a new cellphone contract that our police have entered into with T-Mobiles, as well as our discovery, as discussed, that we are paying approximately a thousand dollars a month for our landlines and our elevators. So we will be eliminating those and moving to cell service for the elevators. So with those reductions, again, they were all operational embedded within each of these budgets. We did not cut any major capital expenditures. We did not adjust or move anything significant in the capital improvement budget or in the Parks and Recreation budget. These were mostly adjustments made to the general fund expenditures. So with the proposed two and a half percent cost of living increase, we end the fiscal year with a fund balance of three hundred and forty-nine thousand. Sorry. Over with a cushion of three hundred and forty-nine thousand and a fund balance exceeding eight point three million.
So did that, maybe my memory is shoddy. Did that change? That is a change. Yeah, I thought we were dipping into fund balance when we were looking at it. No.
We were.
Why did I think that?
At like three hundred and twenty thousand dollars over.
Okay.
Before we were able to make up the cost of living adjustment.
Right.
Yeah, so we cut an additional almost two hundred thousand dollars. To accommodate that cost of living adjustment.
As we talked about last time, that shouldn't have any negative effect on our bond rating.
No, as long as we do not dip into fund balance at the next fiscal year.
I think the balance itself.
Yes, but our actual fund balance is very healthy. The general fund balance is, the fund balance is great. It's that we need to live within our means. So we're not supposed to dip into our fund balance every year, just like you wouldn't dip into your savings every year at home just to be able to pay your bills every month. We aren't supposed to do that as a city as well. So that's the only difference. We have a very nice, healthy savings, but we just don't need to, we just shouldn't be dipping into our savings every year just to be able to meet our basic needs.
So this puts us on, again, my shoddy memory, but I feel like since I've been on council, maybe this is three years in a row of not dipping in or no? Am I misremembering? Are we, we got a couple consecutive now?
Yes, we have several years that we have not dipped into fund balance, or at least we have, we didn't dip in. It looks like we didn't dip into fund balance in twenty-one. Twenty, was it twenty-two-one?
Or twenty-two.
Or twenty-two, twenty-three.
Sweet.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we're getting there. And so we're just trying to really show that we can live within our own means, which is what bond ratings mostly is, that we can live within our.
Some of the people.
Yes, maybe too, but especially bond rating. That's how we got from our outlook stable. That's what we want to see.
And so expenses, we obviously anticipate that there's going to be cost of living raises. Is two point five consistent with the previous double year?
It has varied in recent years. It is a little lower than we would like it to be, but I think we've determined we need a cushion of at least three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us to feel comfortable about where we're at. This increase goes along with the city incurring all of the health insurance increase, so seven point five percent. The city is taking on all of that health insurance increase cost for staff. There were previous years where no increase was given, obviously during COVID. We did not, I believe, two fiscal years ago, we did not give an increase.
Correct. And then my first year, I think we did two percent. When we did. Four, four and a half last year. Yeah, we did a big one last year to make up for a very smaller one the year before when everybody else did a bigger one and we did not. And then, and then this year we're doing two and a half, so.
That's correct. Consumer pricing, that's what it's done over the last year.
It's, it's, yeah, it's up, it's down, it's, it's all over the place, but.
Two and a half percent is not pegged to inflation, obviously. We would like to be able to do more. And as I noted in my memo, we will be undertaking some self-study around our pay scales as well as our benefits. We are one of the only cities in our region that incurs the total cost of health insurance increases for employees. I do wonder if we could offer more cost of living adjustments annually, which again goes to the bottom line, hits people's pension in exchange for backing off from fully funding all of the health insurance increases, if that might be preferable to staff. That's something we're going to examine and be discussing in coming fiscal years. So we can both be competitive and focus on retention, but potentially be in a more sustainable place to offer larger increases. And also to have those tied to an evaluation process. Currently, only our police and fire personnel receive annual evaluations. I think that's something we've all discussed in the past, so.
Can we do no merit increases anywhere? It's all just COVID.
Correct. We will be focusing on instituting a performance evaluation system in the coming fiscal year.
There were revenue projections that increasing as much as the expenses.
Yeah.
I guess there's a lot of decisions to be made.
Which is part of why we've done the longer term look to kind of see what that means for the city is as we go out farther in the year. So if we only look at a one-year snapshot, it's really hard for you as a council to really see what that means growing out several years. That gives you a better look as to what, what that looks like for the city when we go out several years.
When do we anticipate new stock, where do we need to know?
For the budget?
Will be in place and allowing us to be more active with forecasting.
Yeah. Oh, well, as soon as we, as soon as the budget is approved, I'm actually going to a conference this week. I'm going to be talking to several different vendors while I'm there this week. I have another conference in June where I will be talking even more vendors. We've already met with one vendor that does budget software. So I'll be scheduling lots of meetings with budget software vendors. So hopefully we can try to make a decision and do an evaluation and start figuring out what we want to do and what, what aspects we want. So when we decide what software we want to go with, we can kind of start moving ahead and go right away. We will need to start implementing that software as soon as possible so that it's ready to go for the next budget year. So that will have to be a priority this fall. I mean, it'll have to be priority July first and moving forward for this fall with the implementation. That is going to be a priority. If we're going to use it for next year, for sure.
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the additional granularity and attention to detail that we've had this year. It's been really good to see.
I second that.
So at this point, I, the next, I, is there anything else on the budget?
No, I will just remind you that we will have the first and second reading of the budget ordinance at our next meeting with the final reading on your June eleventh meeting.
What's it?
In the public hearing. Public hearing? Oh, yes. The public hearing for the budget will also be at the next meeting, the May twentieth. And that, that's been posted already.
Okay. Next item of business will be to listen to the board and commission applicant pitches. I don't know. It looks like we have a few people here that are going to convince us that they're the best person for boards and commissions. So I appreciate you showing up. Before we get to the actual pitches, this might have some variance on on who and how we select people. Going through the, the list of applicants. On Design and Review Board, the Historic Preservation Commission, we are currently requiring three business members. And I would suggest that we reduce that to two. It's getting very difficult to find business people. And I think the residential members have been very qualified. So is there any, any thought on that particular proposal?
Which, say again, which ones?
That, that would be designed.
Just design.
In Historic Preservation Commission. Currently, we have five members serving three-year terms. And we require three business people. And at this point, we don't have three business applicants for that. So.
Is. Yeah, we haven't had for a while, actually.
Does anyone see a problem with only having two business people?
No, I think if I even smart, I didn't disagree with you.
Okay. The next one would be the Sustainability Commission. We're also in need of a business person that we currently don't have an application from. We have seven members, the Sustainability Commission. We're requiring two business members. We have some extremely qualified people that are residents but not business members. So then the question is, should we consider reducing the number of business members on sustainability to one?
I mean, I'm comfortable with that. I think the way we could maybe phrase it is we'll prioritize a business should one come along, but we've got, we got to fill these positions. So I think we got to do what works.
Is, is the business requirement for that owner or the representative?
Yeah, I think it's anyone that works in Maplewood.
That should. You wouldn't think, you wouldn't, I know, I know why it is. I get it, but. I mean, I hate to say it, but this one, businesses are critical. Making sure. Sustainability, yeah, yeah.
It is the perspective.
Yeah. Is what we've done in Toronto, or both have been around a long time, and this has been happening, and we just leave it vacant, or do we? It hasn't happened until probably just before. Yeah, since COVID, it's been a really hard to develop, build the elements. We were able to.
Where do you leave it vacant?
We did leave it vacant, yes.
And so also they apply or try to get the word out, you know, longer.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think it's too. There's many points to consider at all times.
It's kind of the same result, whether you leave it vacant and only have one business member, or say we only have to have one business member.
Yeah, and, and as mentioned, you know, we can't, we can't prioritize business members when we make nominations and selections yet in the future, because that is one of those qualifications that would be beneficial for someone in that position.
That's why I always feel like when you're got a shortage like that, it's on us. We gotta do a little bit of prom. Promoting, recruiting, everything we need to do. To have a chance.
And so then the, the third issue is with regards to the Human Services Commission. I've noticed that A, we have nine members. And so I, I've only been to one meeting of the Human Services Commission. But so the first question is, do we need nine members? And second of all, of the nine members, only three are required to be Maplewood residents, but as you see, all these positions are being filled by Maplewood residents, which is what we want to have happen. And a lot of the applicants that we have for Human Services Commission, you know, all of them are Maplewood residents. So it's not something that we have to do immediately, but I would like to consider reducing the number from nine to seven. And, and requiring, as we do with all of the other commissions, is that all the members either be a resident or a business person. Any discussion on that?
What was the rationale for being a non-resident? Was this, is this going in like, like a Richmond Heights person because we share Audrey with Richmond Heights, or?
No, this is probably all that and also the fact that you could, you could have somebody that's experienced with human services outside Maplewood that can be, that could treat.
Okay.
I think that was, I think it's great that we have one non-resident. You know, maybe not, they could, you know, the part of the firm, but that is to make sure that case somebody from outside who maybe ran a nonprofit or is familiar with that kind of stuff, that we would try to help. That might be valuable.
But we have been very fortunate to have not only all of the current members as Maplewood residents, but also the applicants that we see. We can easily fill the Human Services Commission with, with Maplewood residents. And it wouldn't be a bad idea also to get Maplewood business owners involved on the Human Services Commission too. So it doesn't affect the decisions we make tonight necessarily, but going forward, I would like to consider in ordinance, and we don't have ordinances for all the commissions. So we should probably codify each of these commissions with an ordinance delineating the, the membership. And, and also while we're doing that, we can also codify the selection process, which we need to talk about as being a cooperative effort between mayor and council. And exactly how we want to do that tonight, we're going to attempt that. So the other, one other issue is that if we don't have business people to fill the board of commission vacancy, I wouldn't mind appointing some of the people that have applied that are non-business people, but they're residents as a interim solution so that we do have the boards and commissions filled. And upon finding and approving, appointing a business person, I would think that that person would then become an alternate. And that could, could help serve. They would have had experience. And they could fill in so that, you know, we have the board and commission meetings that I've been, have not been fully attended by the by the members. And I think that the more participation we have, the better off we are. So if I don't know at this point in time if it's going to conflict with any of the committee ordinances that we have regarding the commissions. But, you know, I would like to propose that we consider non-business members for inclusion. We'll turn them interim. And then we, we will try and fill the positions with the, with the, the type of membership that, that will determine based on our conversations tonight and in the future. So with that being said, if there's no other discussion about process.
I will have one question, sorry.
Yes.
I, I, so the reduction from nine to seven on human services, I understand that. I think it makes sense at some point. Once that's more established to reduce down to seven. But I'm, I'm curious about the rationale for business persons in that committee. Makes sense to me for Designer, Historic Preservation, for Sustainability, and obviously SPD. I'm just curious for human services, if we're moving, reducing business persons on some of these others, if it makes sense to add them and then have trouble filling in them.
Well, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we that we, yes, that you require a business person, but if a business person does apply, then I see, you know, I would consider them also. And, you know, and we have, you know, to establish our own criteria as to whether that is more important than, you know, the, the opinion of a, of a resident who's a non-business person. So are there any other comments or discussion with regards to process? Okay, then let's move on to the people that have shown up for tonight's interview process. Who, please, help upstate your name, what commission that you would like to serve on, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, a whole person.
All right. My name's Paulson White. I've been a Maplewood resident since two thousand and twenty. I'm, I'm interested in, you know, any of the applicable commissions. I'm interested in, you know, better ingraining myself in the, the community and, and finding a role to help share my opinion and my point of view. My, you know, work experience is, is really focused around operations. Right now, I'm a COO of a, a financial services firm in Kirkwood. So a lot of process-driven, critical thinking and problem solving is, is really how my, my brain works. And I think that that would be, you know, applicable point of view to add to any of these positions. And, and then in my education side of things, I studied both economics and political science and have some experience with city planning in that process. So I feel like I'd be a valuable member to, to any of these potential positions. And thanks for the consideration.
And we appreciate the fact that you're, you signed up for any, for any of all of them. Who else do we have here that would like to? Please.
Thanks. I'm not much of a public speaker. I'm not much of a public speaker. Sorry, I wrote this down. So good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Tom Reed. I've been a Maplewood resident for twenty-four years. In that time, I sent my kids to Maplewood School, Charlotte, through eighth grade, and still graduated in twenty-two. I had participated in tax levies, bond issues, school board lectures, and was an active parent in the district. I worked alongside Mark McKenna, Wendy's board leader, Pat Rasmussen, and Dave Curtis, found Maplewood U-Sports. Currently, I'm the chair of the Printmaking Department and lead collaborative printer for Island Press at Wash U's Sanford School of Design and Visual Art. As an art professor who works to find both creative and collaborative solutions, I believe that, I believe that it'd be a good fit and provide a unique point of view to the Sustainability Commission. It has been very good to me and my family, and I'm looking forward to being more engaged in developing a better understanding of our local government. Thanks. And I think in, in the application, I did rank, oh, sorry. I think in the case that I did rank the, some of the other boards and commissions as well. So if it doesn't work for sustainability, then yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anybody on Zoom who wants to talk?
Is there anyone on Zoom? Please come up. No one's on Zoom.
Put a timer on myself.
Not necessarily.
Oh. I'm Ashley Johnson. I'm actually a current member of our library board, and this is the end of my first three-year term. I was appointed during the pandemic in two thousand and twenty-one. I've gotten to serve through our bond initiative. I've got to see all the wonderful planning we're doing on our build outs. It's been wonderful to see and to work with everybody. Like other people mentioned here, I joined, I've lived in Maplewood since two thousand and fifteen. I joined to get more involved in the community. You haven't been to the library recently. Don't go now. Everything's going into boxes, but you can go to our website and observe all the beautiful build out we're doing. I'm an attorney. I served as a secretary on the board and current vice president. I've also served on our public and library board policy committees, including assisting in the writing of policies that can conform with recent changes to Missouri law involving public libraries. We've seen a lot of that, much more than I ever thought I would see at a library board. I've learned a lot. It's not just about vampire fiction, which I promise. I've not seen the amount of vampire fiction I was promised, but I've seen a lot of good neighbors and good people work together, and I'd like to be reappointed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving someone, that's right.
And I, I didn't ask if anyone had questions of the particular. So if there's no one else that is applying for the board and commission, then we need to start the process of discussing who should fill all the positions. And you know, we can, we don't, did anyone sign up for civil service? We've got current members that are servants. Not civil service, yeah, okay. So there's I don't believe you can deal with a civil service commission. So that was easy. So we have the challenge here is to determine priorities with regards to experience and qualifications and on the other hand, getting new people about on the boards and commissions. And so there's good arguments in favor of all of the above. So I guess, starting with the Board of Adjustment, we have five current members. Now, plus it, plus an alternate. The alternate did not apply for for permanent membership, but we do have one applicant, Michael Tomco, and who would like to be on the Board of Adjustment. We, we have one person that has re-applied, so what are your feelings with regards to these two applicants?
It seems, looking at the terms, that, that's a lot of potentially new-ish folks on there, so having a little continuity might not be a bad idea. I don't know either of these people. I don't have a personal opinion, just tactically, some smart.
Yeah, let's see. And Tom, there's a couple of options for us if we want to play some.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we have enough, number one. The applicants that that we, we might be able to fill most, if not all, positions with everyone's first choice. So does anyone have, on Board of Adjustment, have an opinion?
Yeah.
Institution will transfer a fair, a little while longer, obviously, for, for some years. You know, when you stay with Michael Tomco and make some help. So. Wanted to get involved, but I think he's quite. He's got a second place for designing the view yet. Shouldn't have got too many.
So it sounds like, unless I hear a different opinion that Van Laeroy Ecker will be reappointed to the Board of Adjustment and have some more appeals.
Yeah.
Moving to Design and Review Board, Historic Preservation. We have two members that are up. Both are business members. Sean Lordman is the chairman currently. Dana has re-applied to both a business person and a resident. And so Mary Killian was appointed to Design and Review Board previously, but that's, that wasn't her first choice. She has a background in parks. So we can consider that to be somewhat of a vacancy.
Should be moved.
Yeah.
Should remind me of you. No, I think it'd be great to get, I know Ray is on. No, I think it'd be great to get, I know Ray is on the list, number one, I think Ray would be great. He's got a lot of technical knowledge.
Yeah.
Forever, those everybody, uh, but I wouldn't want to kick out one business people, so if there's a way to do it. That way, that'd been great.
Yeah, so, uh, if we, if we add Ray, then we will, uh, we'll talk about. Uh, Mary Killian moving to a different, so, uh, everyone in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I have to take two seconds though and say that, uh, Sean and Dana are amazing. Yes, yes. Yeah, that's. I think Ray is a big addition too, so I think that's nice, that's a nice group.
Uh, moving on to the Human Services, uh, Commission. We have quite a few applicants. We have three of them that, uh. It was their number one choice, and we have three vacancies. Uh, is there any reason not to consider, uh? Let me get Lauren Chuckman. The next one was Paul Waterman, and the third one was Lizzy Wiley. Okay.
Yeah.
All residents. Yeah, and this is one of those, you know. Yeah, they made it your number one priority, so we're assuming that, uh, that they have a passion for. Uh, the next one would be the Library Board. Uh, we have one vacancy and we have three applicants on this one. So. Uh, this is, does anyone really have, uh?
I, I know, I will, uh, Adam Valencic, it looks like he put his first, I've never met him, spoke with him. Um, about other things, and he's a instructional designer for, for giving lemon wood, maybe. Super passionate. Uh, not to discredit anybody else, uh, but I, but I do have some experience, uh, talking with them. I think he, he would be a great candidate for any. Any. Yeah, yeah, being educators, uh, who's helping, yeah, well, the incumbent, Ashley would like back in. Actually, I, I feel like I should honor that, she has some amazing, but, uh.
And then as we look at the other. You know, and then we have, uh, Tamara Scrivener.
It's a good last name for what happened.
Yeah, and, you know, the thing is, she, she had applied, applied before too. You know, so that's another variable in the equation where we have someone that's shown interest in the past.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I. Uh, although that's. Yeah, I mean, I, he would be great for anything, but also, you know, there's other people that have applied. Well, I, it took me three times to get onto the Board of Applying, so I understand that dynamic.
Yeah.
I, I definitely would honor that, especially with the library. Yeah. Very, it's pretty helpful, it's very tempting.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so Tamara, 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 Scrivener, I think it'd be nice to reach out.
Well, yeah, he put two on, uh, human services, but we, we went, we already got there.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, with, with that decision being made, we'll move on to Parks and Recreation. We have two vacancies. We have one, number one, which is Mary Killian, and then we have two number twos. So, uh, the numbers.
I got a couple of number ones.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, Rebecca.
They reapplied. I think that's great for someone.
Yeah, I heard.
Yeah.
And so of the two number twos, let's go to, well, why don't you talk about moving marriage? Yeah, yeah, that would be one, so now we have, uh, we have to fill one more position, and we have Emily. McManama.
I, I do know her, um, her, her kid plays, uh, on our baseball team, so. I didn't realize she, she didn't apply. Yeah, she's pretty awesome.
And we have one applicant that is here today.
Yeah.
So.
Big points show up.
Yeah.
I think she's an athlete, my attendance credits.
Do we have any, we have the vacancies ending in this year and twenty twenty-six, am I reading that right?
Oh, so that's a vacancy that's.
It's not an additional vacancy, sorry to interrupt, it's just a shorter term.
Okay, thank you.
So we're pointing into somebody that is not.
They'll only serve for two years before needing to.
Okay, so it sounds like, uh. Mr. White and Ms. Killian.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, this is going a little bit too easy right now. Planning and zoning, we have, it's seven members, three-year terms. We have at least one vacancy. Uh, we've already, on the number ones, we've already assigned Ray. Uh, Crater, uh, to design and review. And. Let's see, we have. Uh, CD Wiley. And then. We have Mr. Drew White. White has the number.
Didn't we just put that one on?
Yeah, so that makes our, our job a lot easier, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Might be a great, uh, great contribution.
Yeah, I, I don't see any reason to, uh. So, uh, that position then will go to CD Wiley. Moving on to Special Business District Tax Advisory Commission, seven members, uh. There's one vacancy, uh, two have reapplied. Uh, Nikki and Tiffany are both valuable members of the SPD. Uh, actually, everyone is, I'm not going to single them out, but, uh, the fact that they're reapplying to those positions. Uh, we would like to keep them, and at this point, we do need a, another business member. I've reached out to. Quite a few on Friday, and I visited about thirty different businesses, uh, putting it out there, not trying to talk anyone into. The job, but there seems to be interest from, uh, Debbie Cowan at Far Out. I want, I'd really like to get someone from the seventy-one hundred block.
Yeah.
So that, that limits us somewhat to, uh, uh. Bello Disc Golf and to Far Out Smoke Shack. So, and, uh, I've heard good things about Ms. Cowan. So, uh, that will remain vacant for right now, but, uh. I'll, I, I've got a call in to her and, uh, we'll see if, if she wants to join and, uh, having representation that, that block. And a new member with new energy would probably be a really good idea. So that leaves us with the Sustainability Commission. Uh, this is a situation where we need, we're supposed to have. Another, the vacancy should be filled by a, a business person. Heidi Shane has, uh, reapplied for the position. She's done a great job. Uh, so I'm going to open this one up to, uh, a non-business person. We do have quite a few people that are interested in sustainability.
I'm taken by his, uh. Self-productions, I think would be an excellent choice.
The thing about commissions though is that you're pretty much working in a small group. And then, you know, if, uh, at some later point in time, you know, you might be up here. But, uh, we all, you know, a lot of us, I, I started out on, uh, several commissions. And, uh, just don't draw the short straw. So with that being said, it looks like.
Yeah.
It looks like we have a candidate for sustainability, so. Uh, unless there's any further discussion, it looks like we've, uh, filled all the positions that we can except for SPD. And then we'll revisit the, uh. The requirements for Design Review for Human Services and for Sustainability. At a later date and, uh, but knowing that all the commissions are filled, uh. I think we're, we're well on the way to where we need to be. So. If there's no more discussion, uh, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Meeting returns, thank you.